Okay, I have the ball. Al Diario here. I'd like to call this evening's workshop to order, please, 6 o'clock. Just a couple of quick acknowledgements before we begin. If I may, I'd like to welcome our new planning board solicitor, Margaret Hogan, who I believe is in the audience this evening. I'll do this again at the beginning of the regular meeting. But for those attending the workshop, I want to make that introduction. Maggie, hello?
Hi, Al. How are you? Hi, members of the planning board. I'm delighted to be here. I look forward to working with you.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to welcome the addition of John Penney Packer as our alternate planning board member. I don't know, John, are you out there this evening?
He isn't here.
Here I am.
John, welcome back. Pleasure to have you here.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
Okay, so before we buckle down to the task at hand, I'm going to take some liberties here as the chair. I believe this is our third workshop. I'm not going to ask for your comments at the outset of the meeting, but I am going to return to this topic as we conclude. So in my capacity as chair, when a planning board member brings me an idea, topic that they would like to explore, I am delighted to allow them the greatest latitude possible. That said, it was not my intention to engage in workshops every month. I feel that we impose on our volunteers more than enough. An extra hour every month is beginning to, I'm beginning to question its validity. So, and, and I might add, we have now morphed...
One second. Carolyn, that happens when you have both your phone and your computer on at the same time. We get that feedback loop. So I'm just going to ask you to maybe turn the sound off on your computer. So then you can still talk via...
Yeah.
Too bad.
Yeah, I did that.
That was a great effect. I liked it. Anyway. Added to the fact that we have now morphed from the topic of reforestation, let me put that in quotes, to the massive topic of conservation development. And the question that I'm going to pose to the planning board members at the end of the workshop is, what have we accomplished in the past three months? And where are we going with this? So dwell on that for the next hour while we engage in the discussion of what I believe was Jim's task, to introduce us to conservation development.
Good evening, folks. Can everyone hear me?
You've got to come over to the mic.
Come a little closer. As a way of introducing the notion of conservation development to you all, I thought that we should probably pick up where we left off back in 2006, where we had a consultant, Mr. Tony Lackowitz, come in here along with Randall Arant. And they worked for a number of towns in Washington County, Charlestown being one of them, Hopkinton. And they proposed a number of amendments to local regulations, amendments to the comprehensive plan, amendments to the zoning ordinance, and amendments to the subdivision regulations in order to effectuate the practice of conservation development. I brought this topic up because I thought that probably the best way, or one of the first steps we could take towards preserving our forest land is not to lose the forest land in the first place. And so I was familiar with this topic a number of years ago. And I felt that it was a good way to do subdivisions, working with the land, preserving the important natural features on the property. And I did one in Charlestown when I was over there off Shannick Road that really came out well. And, you know, I didn't know if the planning board would be interested in doing something like this. Possibly we have the players in place now that would be receptive to this that weren't in place back in 2006. So it's a good concept to do. Really, we only, we only really contemplated it for residential subdivisions. Probably could be adapted to do any, any type of development. It's just common sense that you want to preserve the natural features that are on the property. So again, I really didn't know the general thrust of what Carolyn was proposing here. So I brought this up as maybe one tool in our toolbox towards, towards her ultimate goals. But again, as Mr. Chairman just mentioned, that as you can see with all of those amendments to those various documents, you have to go through the town council. It's a lengthy process. It's an educational process to all those people who are going to be involved in it. It's a major effort. So if you don't want to go through that, or if the time isn't right, or if we have more important things on our plate right now, I know I do, to be honest with you. I'm almost sorry I brought it up because quite frankly, with this solar stuff, I have, I have everything I can handle right now. Very important topics that are, that are very important to the town of Hopkinton with the landfill and the solar that we're trying to put on there. Those are things that are really going to impact the bottom line of Hopkinton to a great degree. And I think that's where I need to continue to apply my efforts. I've been working on those things for at least two years now and working with DEM, working with Office of Energy Resources. And we're really on the cusp of getting something significant done for the town. So I'm a little hesitant to start jumping around from this to that, this to that, and never really accomplishing anything. So that's kind of my approach. But again, if, I probably think that we could do conservation development to the extent that we can within our existing subdivision regulations. Just read them, read the regulations, see what options the planning board has at its disposal to work with the land, and see if you can get the developers to go along with it. So there's different approaches we can take. Again, I know we're ambitious, we're aggressive, but a lot of this stuff, they're major efforts. As you can see with the revised solar ordinance going through the council now, it's, it's meeting after meeting after meeting, iteration after iteration. It takes a lot of work. So I just don't know, you have to, the way I look at this business that I'm in is, first of all, you have to assess your capacity, assess your resources, prioritize your work schedule, and tackle those things that are most important. You can't do everything. If you attempt to do everything, you're going to fail at everything. You're not going to do anything. And so I would rather, myself personally, I would rather have at the end of the day, at the end of a one-year period, at the end of a two-year period, I would rather have a set of things that we can actually say that we started and completed that really meant something, that was really significant to the town. So, but I'll leave it to the planning board. I'm only an employee here. I have, I have bosses in the form of a manager. You folks on the planning board are my bosses. I'll go along with whatever path you want to do. I'm here to assist you and help you in any way we can, Talia and I. And that's the way we're going to take it. So it's your show, not our show.
Jim, thank you very much. Al Diario here. So this takes us to, at least in my feeble recollection, exactly where we left off last time around, which was perhaps there are components of the conservation development concept that we could readily incorporate into our existing subdivision regulations without revisiting this topic as a whole. Because as Jim has pointed out, and I was a, I was a, how shall I say, a casualty of that last effort, it's a massive undertaking. And if we can abbreviate it and accomplish, I don't want to say the same thing, but damn close to the same thing, by merely some modifications to our sub regs, which is a process in itself, I'm thinking that might be the way to go. So I'll open it up to other planning board members.
This is Emily. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'll go first. Thanks for that setup and context. I tend to think, Al, that I agree with how you're framing this, that, you know, in reading the stuff that Jim provided, the materials about conservation design, it made me go back to the existing subdivision regulations and look really carefully at what is already there. And I, in my own notes, just went through and found several locations in the existing subdivision regulations where we might find opportunities to just strengthen some language or even just as a board, more cognizantly rely on those sections of the subdivision regulations. I agree that there's probably elements of this, these proposed changes that Jim shared related to conservation design that could also be incorporated in sort of a light fashion, as you've kind of described it. And I'd be really interested in pursuing that direction rather than undertaking a full, you know, rewrite of many of these sections of the comprehensive plan, the subdivision regulations, and the zoning ordinance, as was clearly explored in the 2006 timeframe. Because that did look like an extensive effort and one that was assisted by consultants, as you said. And so if we were to do anything like that again, it would, it would seem that we would need assistance from experts. And I'm not sure what the town's resources are right now to be able to do that. So that was, that was one of my questions. If we wanted to go down that route, it's clearly not something that we as members can take on, on our own. So I want to highlight that. But I do think that we have several avenues in the existing subdivision regulations with perhaps assistance of the solicitor or even some limited assistance from professionals, from consultants who do this sort of thing. We can strengthen those existing regulations. One last comment. It occurred to me that while we don't currently have anything incentivizing conservation design in our subdivision regulations, the, one of the projects we're hearing right now opted for a configuration that is very much in line with some of these conservation design principles that are described extensively in the documentation that Jim shared. And so that applicant elected to come to us with that. But the community, in, you know, hearing this discussion that we've been having about that project over the last year, the community apparently support, you know, we haven't heard any negative comments from abutters or from other residents in town about that approach being taken. And in fact, we've gotten encouragement because it did, it did conserve, as part of their plan, a huge amount of open space and a cultural feature that folks in town have found, or have always found significant and even, you know, potentially indigenous residents found significant. So that project has gone forward with little pushback. And so I think if we can incentivize in some way applicants to consider that approach, there may be many instances where it's also in the applicant's best interest to take that approach, as they have with this project that we've been considering recently. So those are my thoughts for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen.
Ron, or John, or Carolyn?
Well, hi, this is John. I'll weigh in. I have not read the minutes from these workshops, so I don't know exactly where we stand. The only thing, the only document that I've found so far is a forestation agreement that's been mocked up.
Carolyn, do you have anything to add? I see that you are in the meeting via phone, so you're welcome to make comments. I can only hear you a little bit. I'm going to make a recommendation that you log out of Zoom via your computer and just predominantly try to use your phone.
You got it.
Unless, unless, of course, unless, of course, you have like a microphone on your computer. But I just think...
I was trying to use it. I'm having trouble with it. I, I always end up reverting back to my cellphone, so I apologize.
No worries. Just wanted to make it easy for you.
Yeah. I want to open up by saying that I appreciate everything that Jim Lamfair said. We do have a lot on our plate. And we don't want to spin our wheels from meeting to meeting without accomplishing anything we need to move it forward. It's a concern that I have as well. I'll reference a document that I emailed to you guys tonight. This is, for all intents and purposes, the language that I'm proposing be reviewed, modified, tweaked. I'm not a lawyer or a technical writer for these types of things. But it's, it's the document and the language that I would be proposing for a forestation agreement to be inserted somewhere underneath our subdivision. And it might be too extensive. Some of it might be, not be relevant. But I laid it out because this is where we want to be. You know, referring back to Al's comments earlier, if we don't start putting the technical part together, then we shouldn't be doing this. So that document will be available for everybody to review. And when it comes to the conservation development that Jim was talking about, when I was going through the information that was provided to us, I was really excited. This forestation concern that I have does go hand in hand with the conservation proposed, the conservation design elements that were presented to us. And I would like to see us take action and pull elements from both of them in there. Wow, that was loud.
I think that's your email.
The document that I sent talks about things like forest and delineation. So incorporating that process into a conservation design would be very helpful. And the forest and delineation is a narrative, a map, that tells us about what the green stuff is that's on the land that is being proposed for development. So it's helpful. I guess what I'm seeing after I read the work that Jim presented to us, inserting some of the language that I proposed in this document that I sent you, incorporating some of that into the conservation development and inserting them into a subdivision area would, would work. You know, I'm, I'm passionate about the forestation, the deforestation that's going on in the community. I know the town council and the planning board is working towards preventing as much of that as we possibly can. The reckless destruction is what we're trying to avoid. I think the conservation design incorporated with conscious forestation program can work for us. And it doesn't need to be complicated. And I raised my hand. I don't want to waste our time either. And I also want to say, I was, I was hoping we were going to have Scott Millar on board tonight because I'm really excited to get his perspective on what direction would be best for us to go in. And I don't know if he's going to be able to join us, but I don't know. I will be quiet and let somebody else speak now.
Thanks, Carolyn. Let me just touch base on that Scott Millar issue. Did you speak with him directly?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't. I, I thought you had touched base with him at the last meeting.
Yes, I did. After the last meeting, I did reach out to him. You know, I had an opportunity to chat. And his direction was to touch base with the town planner in Charlestown, which I did. I reached out to Jane. I am still waiting for a call back. I realize everybody's busy. And I know that Charlestown is in the throes of this very same topic, conservation design. They have, they're working with some consultant. The name escapes me. Anyway, that was the direction from Scott. So I didn't get anything of substance from him. He just pointed me in a different direction.
Yeah, and that sounds like a great direction to go in as well. I don't, I don't know. Without having provided you guys with this instrument that I emailed out earlier, I don't know that I can offer any new insights to what we're trying to accomplish here tonight.
Well, it sounds as if you have done that. As I understand it, and I only saw your email come in some 20 minutes before the meeting, pretty much because I was walking in the door here. Do I understand that there's a document that you're proposing as a near-finished product?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
It consists, it consists of general requirements, an outline of what's required by the, what would be required by the planning board for forest and delineation. We cover preliminary forest conservation plan, you know, that would need to be presented in a timely manner before master plan. It prioritizes our processes as far as the way we view a project. Final forest conservation plan, the requirements that are there. We talk about the responsibilities of keeping the forestation plan alive, the maintenance, the, you know, the planting season per se for us. You know, it's got to be something that started after March and monitored for a couple of years after that. It talks about giving developers the opportunity to explain why they have to clear cut particular areas on their proposed development. And it holds them responsible for payment in lieu of leaving forests standing, as they are, into a forest trust bond or something to that effect. It's where we'd like to be. It talks about reforestation, afforestation, the limits, the lot coverage, all of these things that we're talking about. And at one point, we were talking about, you know, tree diameters. This goes into all of the language that we would want if we were to insert something like this into a subdivision portion of our regs. And it's covered a lot of the area. My brain hurts.
Okay, so it sounds like...
Requirement.
Yep, sounds like we have a document ready to review. That's a tremendous step forward. Appreciate that.
Yeah, we do. It's thorough. And it's not something that you just want to take a broad brush at. It's, it's the deeper dive that you would hope for. And I'll tell you, I don't feel awfully comfortable about coordinating this because it's not in my wheelhouse. You know, the kind of technical writing that I do is, is different. And because I'm not familiar with the regulations the way I could or should be, and I'm not too familiar with, you know, how DEM addresses forestation and whatnot, that's what makes me a little bit wildly on my feet. And I would trust that we would be able to get some super guidance from a professional that could speak to these things. Because we certainly are not the experts.
Okay, excellent.
Okay.
Carolyn?
Yes?
Carolyn, could you send me that email? I just checked again momentarily here, and I don't have it yet. So if you could just resend that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I actually forwarded it to Talia. If you guys wouldn't mind, I would forward it to the other planning board members now. But I, following protocol, I sent it to Talia, Al, and Jim. And, you know, I told them that I, the reason why it wasn't forwarded earlier is because I was, I like to write something and edit it and go back periodically. And it dawned on me that I was wasting our time by not putting it forward. And I would appreciate the edits coming from the team.
Oh, understood.
So, yeah. But if, if I get a thumbs up from Al and Jim, I would be more than happy to forward that along.
Okay, thank you. On a further note, go ahead, Al, I'd like to interrupt.
No, 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 I'm sorry. I was just going to cast my, my vote for yes. Go ahead and send it to the parties. Although it sounds like everyone's going to have the better part of another month to review it.
Oh, for sure, yeah. Yeah, we can wait.
I'm sorry, Ron, go, go for it.
Okay. I was holding this kind of to the end because of the statement you made in the beginning. I agree 100%. Every month, we're putting in an hour to do these things. And not a large portion, but a portion of that is previously on kind of thing. I would almost think that it would be to our advantage to collect all the information we collect, we can collect, from DEM, from foresters or whatever, and go over it along with Carolyn's proposal, get together and have a regular workshop for a day that's not our regular meeting so we can actually get all of it done, hopefully, and that one or a major portion of it done in one, you know, one hour at a time, once a month. I don't think we can devote the time that is needed to digest all of this information and make reasonable comments and decisions on it. But that's just my opinion.
That's my opinion.
Okay, boss.
Al Diario again. Ron, elaborate a little bit. What do you mean a real workshop? You mean like coffee and donuts and stuff?
Oh, hey, that'd be great.
Oh, boy, kidding. What, what, tell me, elaborate on it right there. Elaborate.
By regular workshop, I mean something that's scheduled as a workshop and it's allotted two, three hours possibly. You know, instead of just one hour a month and now we've got to pick up and refresh our own minds. At least I do. I'm kind of old and senile. But we can get a lot of work done, you know, a three-hour session. Say a different night during the month or a different Wednesday during the month, or whatever seems to work for everybody.
Okay, I'm with your idea. I just want to make sure we don't end up going from an hour a month to three hours every month. That's moving in a direction that I'm not prepared to endorse. So if your idea is one fell swoop, and I don't know how practical that is, but if that's your idea, I mean, I can get behind it. But that, I think it's a big lift. Because if in one session, you're proposing that we both collect, assimilate, and redraft, if you will, all this information into a living document, I think that's a lot to ask. Am I misinterpreting your idea?
No, no, you're not. I was thinking back of the workshops that we've had, mostly at Cherahoe Middle School. You know, there were a specific meeting just for that amount of work that needed to be done. And we got a lot accomplished during those.
I concur with you completely, but if I'm thinking about the same workshops that you are, I dare say that there had been a lot of preparation done in advance before we arrived at those workshops. So we weren't like trying to chisel the wheel that evening. Probably the planning staff had done a significant amount of work that was placed in front of us and all we had to do was brush up a few details. I think there's a big difference between A and B.
Well, there is, but it's not that great a difference, I don't think. And we'd have to knuckle down and do a little bit of research and contact these other people and get things on board. Wow, what was that? You know, it won't be easy. These things are never easy. But, you know, if we can find a way to get it done, let's get it done. And I don't mean what I'm saying, I mean the whole proposal, the whole idea.
Yep, I understand. Anyone else to weigh in on this one?
This is Carolyn. I forwarded you guys the draft by email.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, Jim, one of the questions that I had is I, you had mentioned, I believe you said it was South Kingston, that there was a conservation development. The developer was proactive, wanted to work with me on it. And I would like to actually take a drive through there. So is there a name of the development or a street that you recall?
I recall, I believe it was called Shanick Hills. And it's off of Shanick Road going south from Route 2. And it's not the first road on the right. It might be either the second or the third road on the right-hand side going, going towards the Rat Skeller, if you will. Okay?
Okay.
And it's a subdivision that was done by conservation development. It's in the town of Charleston. And it was done by Commonwealth engineers. And there are very expensive homes that are there. And it's a cul-de-sac at the end and the center of the cul-de-sac is all planted. Last time I went by there, it's a, it's a very high-end subdivision. And the developer was thrilled to be able to employ those principles to the extent that he could. And I think it turned out well for everybody, including the residents in the town. I think it was a win all the way around. But, you know, the key to doing these things is getting to a developer before they start putting their concept planned on paper. Once they bring, once they, you know, sometimes even before the pre-application meeting, because sometimes they even have their concept plan already roughed out at the pre-application. So the nice thing about having all of these principles encoded in our regulations is that our regulations are out there for people to take a look at. And maybe before they design a subdivision, their designers will take a look at our regulations and see, ah, hey, here's something that the town likes. So that's why it's important to really get something in our regulations somewhere. So, so I don't know where, I mean, I looked up for Charleston, as Al suggested, I want to see what they were doing. And I come up with one of their agendas. And I guess, I think if I recall, they had an agenda on one of their workshops where they were trying to select a consultant to work with. Now, maybe they've advanced to the point where they've actually chosen a consultant because I was looking at past agendas. But, but again, sometimes that's what you need. You need an outside consultant to come into a town and make a presentation. Sometimes the staff that work in a town, believe it or not, can't say what a consultant can say. They can't present things in a way because, because staff gets tainted, especially if the notion is not very well received. Okay? If a staff person mentions something that doesn't go over too big, they become tainted with that forever and they never shake it. A consultant, they come in, they do their job. If they get tomatoes thrown at them and run out the door, fine. They don't care, they're off to the next job. But that's the way it goes. Now, South Kingston, Carolyn, they have, they actually put something on the books called flexible design for residential projects. And that was their attempt at putting conservation development in their regulations. So we, I would suggest that we take a look at that and see what they did. But, you know, I'll tell, I'm going to interject a little bit. Carolyn, you did, you did the very important work by putting your ideas down in this document. Now, I haven't read the document yet, but that's where all of this begins with a concept, with your idea. You don't have to be a technical expert in drafting subdivision regulations. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest this. Let me take a look at what you wrote. Talia and I will take a look at it. We'll review the concepts that you put forth and we'll see if we can find a way to take those concepts, embed them somehow in our existing subdivision regulations. And then, as Al was suggesting, we can do that legwork such that when we come back with a three-hour workshop or a dedicated workshop for this, we'll have something, you know, substantial as a starting point. So that's my, that's my offer to you, Carolyn, on that one.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. And I really do think that with the conservation design and the theory behind the forest protection plans that I'd like us to move forward with, I think we can accomplish a lot for the community. I think having a new town council on board and seeing these matters for the first time would take any negative past connotations off the table. I think we're trying to do something that's going to complement everything that we've been working towards. So I appreciate everything that's going on here. And if anybody has any recommendations to give me and as to how I might be able to support our efforts going forward, let me know. I'm really interested in us being able to be efficient and productive in a very positive way. I think our town needs something positive and productive instead of the battles that we've had to endure for the last couple of years.
I agree, Carolyn. So let's, let Talia and I take a look at what you've produced, which is really critical. And let's see, let's see what we can put together. And we can disseminate that to the planning board after we're done with it and see what the board thinks about it. And if you want to schedule a workshop to fine tune it, we could certainly do that. But it was very important to do what you did, Carolyn. I appreciate your effort because that's what it all begins. Everything begins with a concept or an idea, so, which has to be refined and codified.
Yeah.
So, I mean, without, without your idea, we can't do anything because I have ideas, Talia has ideas, Al has ideas, we all have ideas. They might not be, they might not be the planning board's ideas. So we have to know from you, the board, what your goals are, where you want to go. Once we get a firm handle on that, we can shape it to meet your expectation.
Okay. And I'll offer this up too. While you're going through that, that process and that stuff, if there's language in there that is not relevant, needs to be tweaked or whatever, I would take any recommendations and critiques you have to offer, also, you know, from the board as well. But in the meantime, you know, if there's a way to shorten this from 13 pages or if there's irrelevant information or something else that you think needs to be included, let me know and I'll do the best I can to support that inquiry and those efforts, okay?
Okay, Carolyn. As a matter of fact, I might even go so far as to say, because you were the initial author of this, is, you know, once Talia and I get through with it, we'll give it to you first and see if it meets your personal expectations. And then we'll give it to you.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll work with you on this. I mean, we all put too much effort and time into this right now just to see it go by the wayside. So let's, let's see what we can get out of this.
Okay. Can I ask that you don't review it after you've had a martini?
All right, so on to strategy, if there's, if there's nothing else to add. So I understand that Jim and Talia are going to take a look at your draft and find a way to incorporate it into our subdivision regulations. Now, once that's done, they're going to run it by you first. Is the thinking that we're going to have another one-hour workshop next time around? Or do you think we're going to be, I'm going to direct this to Jim, do you think we're going to be in a position where we might be at that stage that I think Ron was alluding to, where maybe one coffee and donut session might bring it home? What do you think?
We can, we can try to turn it around for the February meeting and we can have one, you know, one more hour session first, just to see what comes up. It's kind of a quick turnaround, but-
I hadn't, I hadn't assigned a timeframe. I'm just really curious as to whether we're going to continue with the one-hour session, could be in February, could be in March. Or are we going to try and target one big housekeeping session to try and finalize?
I think we need one more one-hour session, whenever that might be, even if it's in March, just to, just to look at the document and see if it's worthy of having that three-hour session. So I, I would say, I think we need a one-hour session followed at some point by a three-hour session. And then, and then we'll be done, hopefully.
I get it. Ron, what do you think about this?
Excuse me, I think it's an excellent idea. You know, if we're all kind of putting a little bit of elbow grease, as they say, in between now and then, look at Carolyn's document, look at the email that she just sent to us, look up stuff online, you know, some of the other places, DEM and conservation commissions, make some notes in our next hour session, like Jim said, whether it's February, March or whenever, and come up with a plan amongst ourselves and then have our session and see where it goes. That'd be an excellent idea. You know, it is something that's very valuable. We definitely need this in our town. There's a few things that I don't want to say slipped through the cracks because these developers followed the rules that were in place. The burden of proof has to come on the planning board and the town council. They followed the plan, they followed what they were supposed to do, but it just wasn't enough. So this is our chance, our opportunity to hold their feet to the fire, so to speak. Get them to do the things that we want them to do. I don't want to use the term to do the right thing because if it's agreed upon, it's the right thing no matter what. But, you know, we definitely need this. Carolyn has done a fantastic job with what she's already done. Let's all just get together and fine tune it.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. Just two other thoughts then. I'd like to return to Emily's idea about looking at conservation design components and incorporating them into our subdivision regs. So do you think that we might be able to do that as well? And I'm directing that at Emily. I don't mind taking some of that burden myself, but do you think we might be able to come up with a couple of ideas so that we're not going backwards in time and we're tackling that task at the same time? What do you think?
Yeah, this is Emily. I think so. I would, I'm glad we're going down the route of, you know, taking some more time to look at documents and things because I, in order to be most productive and probably make some more definitive suggestions, I'd like to spend some more time with the documents that Jim shared and go back and look at the existing subdivision regulations and look for specific places where we could fold some elements in and actually make some, some more productive suggestions besides just the conceptual, what I've just already said. So I'd be happy to, to take a look at that and I think that's a good route to go.
Okay, great. And then the second item, we need to stand back and look at the larger picture here. So all of this discussion that we've been having, this work that we've been doing, this has all been, you know, let me call it internal discussion, not, not a lot in the way of, you know, garnering public comment. We haven't had any of the stakeholders comment on these ideas. So that's still a task in front of us. So once we solidify our own thinking, let's keep in mind that there is still the step of public hearings with a much broader audience incorporating those comments and concerns into the document. And then bringing this to the, you know, the stage where we're actually modifying our subdivision regulations, which again is the subject of another public hearing. So again, there's a, there's a, there's a long stretch ahead of us, even after we get to the point where we have come to some agreement on what we're actually trying to accomplish. Those are my parting thoughts.
This is, this is Carolyn. I, another comment I would make about the information that Jim provided us is that you can read how extensive the work and the effort actually was. And to bring it as far as they did is only complimentary to what I was looking at. And I, I'm thinking that maybe it's a short putt for us because so much of the work is laid out in that. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring this together, hopefully, in this new 2021. And by the way, Happy New Year's, everybody.
Thank you. Happy New Year to you.
Okay, any other thoughts with regards to the workshop information? We're bringing that on to 6:45. We've got a couple more minutes if, if there are other thoughts to share.
Nope.
Okay, we'll conclude our workshop then.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's adjourn the workshop. I guess I'll entertain a motion for that, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the workshop.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second. Carolyn, that's Emily seconding.
That was Emily seconding, sorry.
Very good. I have a motion, I have a second for the discussion. Not all in favor. Diario, yes.
Prowitz, yes.
Light, yes.
Shumshini, yes.